Good time, please.
They say yes or no, really.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Chapman. Councillor Guyberson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zero. That was the number. That was the point that stood out for me tonight. If I were to forget everything, and it's been a dizzying quantity of information and statistics and viewpoints, if I were to try to remember anything from tonight, and if others were only to remember one thing, I hope it would be the number zero. It's the number of people who have died at the insight facility since it opened in 2003. I completely understand how jarring the suggestion would be that we would have a facility where people could come and use illegal drugs. It's a lot to wrap one's head around. You know, I respect Councillor Chapman's motion, which is why I was willing to somewhat reluctantly second it. From my background and from my viewpoint, I would be prepared to see an endorsement of this initiative tonight. However, I also respect my council colleagues and members of the community who, again, are still trying to wrap their head around this. So with that in mind, I'm willing to see us, you know, have this be looked at in mid-March. I strongly urge everyone who's involved to take the time to do whatever learning they still need to do on this issue, have conversations with members of the community. But I also strongly will be urging council to be endorsing this team and the initiative that they're moving ahead with. I think that it's an exceptional team. We've seen very clearly that they just demonstrate professionalism, integrity, and compassion. And at the end of the day, we're going to see a tangible result because when somebody is in a facility like this, it's fewer needles in our parks, on the streets, around our businesses. Just as recently as last week, I spoke to a business owner downtown who came to me with a certain amount of distress and said there was recently, just the day before, a woman who was in his establishment, who was clearly dealing with addiction, went to shoot up in the bathroom, and he was turning to me as his local politician to try and suggest something. I don't pretend to have all of the answers. One thing I couldn't tell him last week was, in events like this, there is someone, somewhere, that you can send individuals like this because right now, there isn't anywhere to send them. You would just send them to someone else's bathroom or to a different alleyway. I would prefer to see them go somewhere where they can be helped if they need it, as Councillor Chapman has mentioned. When it is time for them to shift to something new, they're in a much better position to do that if they are alive. You cannot help or save an addict who is no longer alive. So again, I am willing to see this motion go forward tonight, but I strongly urge us to move ahead with an endorsement of this initiative come of March. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Guyberson. Councillor Gray, good evening, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to propose an amendment. If I have a second, or I basically would involve that, in the first part, that the city cannot and then delete, commit to supporting, and replacing it with render a decision on a proposed consumption treatment site.
So you got a second, or by Councillor Nicholson?
Thank you.
And we would, so this would be an amendment to this resolution here?
Yeah.
You'll just, I think we'd like to try and get it on screen so everybody could see it, sir. Madam Clerk, is there any way that we can see the changes that are being proposed?
Right up on the screen.
What was previously there, what's being proposed?
Commit to supporting.
That the city cannot?
Commit. So now it's going to be render as opposed to commit to supporting? Has it been taken out? It's now render a decision on?
And that's the amendment there?
Yep.
Is this exactly what you're proposing, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. We'll leave it in writing.
I didn't even have to submit it to her.
Oh, jeez. I know, but we'll take it in writing anyways. So that's the amendment that's on the floor. You could speak to that if you wish.
I will, and I speak to the motion in general with the amendment and whether it passes or not. Whenever we hold a public meeting, we don't, when we have the public meeting, we don't commit for or again that night when we hold public meetings. We're there to gather information. So I keep, this amendment keeps within that realm of the way we conduct ourselves at public meetings. Now, just to speak to this, having been through the methadone issue, I am very cautious. I want to help people, but I don't, I find sometimes you get, they overpromise and then they way underdeliver. Well, if they way underdeliver, we've got a major problem. So that's why I need all the assurances that it's going to be conducted in the way it is. I saw videos of that first safe injection site in Canada, and the behavior outside the clinic is appalling. It shows somebody taking a needle out of the arm because I guess, I guess they were falling asleep or whatever with the needle still in their arm, and a lady grabbed it and then shoved it into her arm. That's not safe. That's not a safe injection. And I know that, you know, this will attract a lot of people, you know. How many prostitutes have we seen out on the streets? Well, they're addicts. Well, they're going to be there, and they're going to need to earn some money because they've got to buy the drugs so they can be safely injected. I mean, those things can't, those things cannot be overlooked. And if we, if we find that, they say at the end of the day, well, that's going on outside the building, therefore it doesn't count. That's, that's my biggest fear, is that they won't take a proactive approach to this, that they won't be, okay, now, you know, get along, or, because I just don't want to see these activities going on. And if, for goodness sakes, if they do put it in the mall, you know, that's going to scare more people away, and we, we know Midtown Mall, for example, is a bit challenged right now. They've lost two major anchoring tenants, the entire one out years ago, and then the grocery store. So we've got to be very, very cautious before we stampede into this. And as I say, I need assurances that what they promise they're going to do, they deliver on, and that, because once this is approved, members of council, there's no going back. It's forever, or until funding runs out from a provincial or federal government. So we have to do this right. And I think it's, it's only fair and prudent that they go off and do their public consultations, although I am a little concerned on, they're just going to do it online. That means that people who don't go online won't have access to it. This has got to be done right. And it really has been left to the last minute to hold a proper public meeting. As, as Councillor already mentioned, this is not an issue that people would generally be tuned into. But once they find out, once you say safe injection, they know what a safe injection is, and then, you know, they will have some fears or concerns, or maybe support. So I'm just trying to urge caution here, and at the end of the day, I want to make good, sound decisions that don't have a negative repercussion in the community. We've spent so much money in the downtown area, and they want to be in the downtown area, so I don't want to undo all that, the great initiatives that have happened so far. It could be undone very quickly. Already, we have people saying, I don't go down there, I don't feel safe. That's detrimental to the well-being of our downtown. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Councillor Gray. Really appreciate it. To the amendment, Councillor Nicholson, please.
As to the amendment, I heard earlier from the applicant group that they are doing an online survey and that they can have further information to us prior to March 18th. I think for us to make a decision one way or another prior to getting that information would be a mistake. I think the motion that we, the amendments being put, gives us the time to think long and hard what we heard tonight, get that additional information from the applicant group. If this is successful, Mr. Mayor, just to give you a heads-up, I have a motion that a special meeting of council be held no later than March 18th. It gives you some flexibility of setting dates and times. I tend to echo Councillor Guyberson's viewpoint on this, but I understand the concerns that have been raised by the other members of council as well. Where I'm struggling with in trying to be forced to make a decision tonight is that, first of all, I don't have enough information. I don't know the proposed location. I don't know the results of the consultation that we're asking for, and I don't know what the online survey is going to show. I think the very fact we had this meeting tonight and that we're struggling may mean that other people in the community as well may offer their viewpoint in the next few weeks as well, and I don't want to preclude their opportunity for commenting as well. The biggest problem I'm having with this whole issue, and I want to just get my words out there now so I don't repeat them later, is that we've had eight years without this process, and the only result is more deaths and an increase in the problem. I would have hoped the government, at both provincial and federal levels, would stop giving token money to this issue and try to address it as the health crisis that it is. I think $25 million for the entire province of Ontario is ludicrous. It's not going to address the problem. It's going to help certain communities, maybe 21 of them. We have 440 communities and municipalities in this province, and they're wide-ranging. And I don't think a token amount is going to solve the problem. We need, in the long run, to look at the Netherlands model of treating this as a medical issue, because that's all it is. We have to stop discussing it as a societal issue. We have to stop discussing it as a recreational issue. It's a medical issue. It's no different than somebody else having another type of disease. We have to treat it with the best medical advice we can get. But the last thing that a council should do is do nothing. And if we were to simply push this off into some future process after, in long-term review, and, I mean, we're looking at another year, we don't even know that it'd even be a program a year from now. What I can't get through in my mind is if somebody were to ask me a year from now, when dozens more have died, what did you do when you had the chance? And I think that's the hard question all of us have. When you had a chance to do something, did you decide to try? Did you try to address the issue? It's not perfect. I've got many problems with the plan, but I can tell you, I've got far more problems with doing nothing. I've got far more problems with people going into restaurants and washrooms and libraries and shooting up. I've got a lot more problems when we have, when we've heard 400 emergency services calls in a year. We're not talking about a one-off situation or a few problems. Every day, our ambulance service is responding. Every day, our fire service is responding. Every day, our police are responding. This is happening every day of the year. And unfortunately, they're the ones on the front lines, they're the ones who are going to be out there having to deal with someone dying or somebody found who passed. If we have a chance to resolve that, if we have a chance to do one small step in the right direction towards doing that, we should take that chance. But the motion before us is that we need more information, and I think the only prudent step that we can take tonight on this file is to support the amendment that Councillor Gray's put up, direct our mayor to call a special meeting of council prior to March 18th, give the applicant a chance to come back with their online survey and their location, and then we can render an informed decision. If we don't do that, then we've not done our job in due diligence.
Thank you very much, Councillor Nicholson. Councillor Kerr, you're up next to the amendment, please, sir.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
Exactly. All this amendment is semantics, basically, so whether you say render a decision, or they say commit to a decision, or whatever words you use, it's the same thing. So sure, if that's what it takes, I'll agree with the amendment, I'll have something to say about the main motion when we come back to that.
Beautiful. And Councillor McConkey?
On an amendment to that amendment, if I want to talk, I wanted to add to that number one, to make it clear, because what you're saying there is so open-ended. So they come back and they say, yeah, we had a public consultation. They haven't said, yeah, with input related, we need to know if the community is supporting this. And how do we know? We need to put a link on our website to their survey. We're doing all kinds of pop-ups in the community on different issues. This is too open-ended. That, you know, you want me to talk just about render a decision, those four words, or can I talk about number one?
So, so we're talking about the sub-amendment right now, that is, part of, part of the original resolution that was being put on the floor. If you're looking at proposing something else, I propose that you put it in writing.
Oh, I have it in writing, and I believe that should be continued, that sentence.
Okay, so, hold up a sec. Why don't you, if you've got it in writing, let's, let's get it, let's take a gander at it, and let's see, see what it means. And do you have a second, or for your amendment?
I hope someone would second.
Okay. Okay, so why don't you read your, your, your sub-amendment, and we'll, we'll see if we can find you a second there.
And the results of the Lake Ridge Health Survey indicate that the Oshawa community supports a CTS, and a link to the Lake Ridge Health Survey be placed on the city's website. I mean, how, we don't know, you know, how, we don't know the questions on the survey. You can ask questions and say-
So, okay, so let's, let's-
That's the bare minimum I see that we need.
All right, just hold up a second. So what I'm being told by the clerk is, under number one, we're doing the, this sub-amendment on number one. Why don't we get this passed, then we'll go, I'll come back to you for what your amendment is. Why don't we try and get this passed first, and then we'll deal with yours. Are you okay with that?
So you're saying I can add that to number one? Because we're saying until the public consultation project-
Give me a-
Okay. I wasn't finished talking, but go ahead.
So what I was proposing, with the advice of the clerk, was let us deal with this sub-amendment at this particular time. If we get through this, I will come back to you right away. Fair enough?
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's take a vote on this. All those in favor of the-
Recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote.
Councillor McConkey?
Yes.
Councillor Neilus Adams and Councillor Nicholson?
Yes.
Councillor Chapman?
Yes.
Councillor Guyberson?
Yes.
Councillor Gray?
Yes.
Councillor Hurst?
Yes.
Councillor Kerr?
Yes.
Councillor Maren Petchy and Councillor Marks are absent. Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Okay.
So the amendment that you're putting on the floor goes to number one, and you are moving it. Do you have a second, or for? You're looking for a second?
I'm looking for a second there.
Again?
So here it is, here. I'm putting it on screen, so just, just a second. Councillor McConkey, you see it on the screen, it's highlighted in yellow. Is that what you had written?
Yes, I would ask if you could put the word immediately on, before the period.
Website immediately?
Well, as soon as it's available.
So, under number one, and the result of Lake Ridge Health Survey indicating the Oshawa community supports a CTS, and that a link to the Lake Ridge Health Survey be placed on the city's website immediately. That's the sub-amendment?
Actually, I'm sorry, it would, it would say and until the results. So I had the and that a link be put first.
Just hold on a sec, we're just taking what you've got written here.
Yeah. Well, I was following the until on the, the first until.
Councillor? Councillor, do me a favor, just give us a moment, please. Councillor Gray, you're gonna-
Is the mover amenable to inserting that if the results, because we're almost presupposing what the results are, and then that the following action would take place?
Mr. Mayor, I think the mover says until. So the purpose, as I hear it from Councillor McConkey, is that until we get the results, that we should put the link to the survey on our website. I think that's what Councillor McConkey's asking for.
Thank you, Councillor-
It's not if. So I'm just, I'm looking for a second. I just don't like to presuppose on the only-
Yeah, no, I, I, there was a friendly that was offered. Are you okay with that, Councillor McConkey? If, now, I need a second on this.
Yes.
So are you willing to second it?
Not as it's currently configured.
Okay. Who's willing to second it as it is?
Yeah, I'm amenable to clarification on what I'm trying to get across. I don't know if it's clear to everybody.
All right, so you're on, it's on. So you're, you're saying that you would support a sub-amendment that said until? Okay. And the until goes there? Okay. So you're willing to support that, Councillor Gray? You're okay with that as the, as the change in your amendment? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I'll put you on the speakers list, but I'll go back. You have a point of order? Please go ahead.
As I'm raising a point of order, is it says the city cannot render a decision. And then it makes a decision. It sets a criteria up for approval. And the problem I'm having is, either you're making a decision or you're not making a decision, but if you're voting not to render a decision, you can't set up a criteria for approval. Therefore, it should be out of order.
Well, if it's contrary, then what's above its contrary?
Councillor.
Until.
Councillor.
It's a second until.
Councillor, you've been here for four hours. So, give me a moment.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm reading into is, if there's going to be a survey, that at least there's a link from the city's website, then people, if they're interested, they could go to the, that's what I think the council's trying to accomplish, and I just, I'm just not quite sure the wording's going to get us to where we want to be.
I would be agreeable to an amendment, to a friendly on moving that last, because I did write it up above, but I'm not too sure where to fit it in now. It should be, yeah, okay.
So... So that's, that's what's being proposed, so that it's not contrary to what's being already written, it falls within the amendment. Your mover, your second is happy with it. Is the mover happy with it?
All we're saying there, then, if you take that out, is that we just get the results of their survey? Where does it say that the community's in support?
We're not trying to say that the community's in support or against. It's just the fact that if that survey exists by Lake Ridge Health, there's a link from our city website, so if somebody visiting the city website will then be able to follow the link to the Lake Ridge Health Survey.
I understand that part, but we're not rendering a decision-
No.
-until we get the results.
Yeah.
But what if we don't agree with the results? Doesn't spell it out there that we are seeking community support?
But, but-
That's not our role.
Wait a minute on that. We're not seeking to see whether there's community support. We want to find out what the community thinks for gains.
I'm sorry, the Lake Ridge is seeking community support, but you heard Mr. McGarry say that's not, that's not the criteria. The criteria, he believes, is for us to endorse it. But it's spelled out that we need to have community support, so if they're not actually mandating that, we should be.
Okay. Are you happy with what's here? Because if you're not, let's withdraw it, and let's, let's move on.
No, that's fine. Go for it.
Okay, all right. So there's the amendment. All those in favor?
Recorded vote, please.
Just, just at the bottom, that's all. Recorded vote.
Councillor McConkey?
Yes.
Councillor Neilus Adams and Councillor Nicholson?
No.
Councillor Chapman?
No.
Okay, Councillor Guyberson?
Yes.
Councillor Gray?
Yes.
Councillor Hurst?
Yes.
Councillor Kerr?
Yes.
Councillors Maren Petchy and Marks are absent. Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Thank you. So the main motion is amended, and Councillor Kerr, you want to speak to this whole package?
I do, very briefly, Mr. Mayor. I only asked one question tonight of Mr. McGary, and that was, do you have a location, and do you have to have a location to submit your proposal? And he said, no, we don't have a location. And if you recall, I said, then you would probably understand that this council cannot support or endorse what you're proposing until such time as we have some facts upon which to make a decision. So based on that, I totally support this motion, and I encourage my fellow colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Kerr. Councillor Nicholson?
I have an amendment. I have it in writing.
You guys are trying to kill me.
It's that part two be deleted, and it's a new part two we added that reads that a future meeting of council be held no later than March 18, 2019, and the applicant be invited to the future meeting to further update council on its public consultation results and the location of the proposed CTS center.
So you want the whole number two taken out, that the federal government, provincial government not approve a CTS site in Oshawa at this time until?
We have a council meeting.
A conference of public consultation processes undertaken with input from the city.
The problem I'm having is-
Give me a second, here. You got it moved, you got a second on it?
Gotcha.
Okay. So you have a second, which is Councillor Hurst. You're going to, you're going to support that. Let's get it on the screen. I've got to go back to the mover, and I'll go to you, Councillor Kerr, after that, if that's okay, sir. Thank you very much. I may need also a motion to be able to extend the hour at 11 o'clock, just to let you know. Oh, yes, we will. Just to let you know, folks, the only date that is available prior to the 18th is March 14th, and many of you will be on March break, I would presume, but I'm just letting you know that that's the only other date prior to the 18th. The next available date would be March the 19th, which would probably fit into the schedule, but it would be a day late and a dollar short.
No, that's, Mr. Mayor, they did say they have to have it in by the end of March, but they wanted to get it in earlier. So the 19th would not be an issue for them because it's not at the end of the month. So that is a possibility.
Thank you.
Happy to amend it to the March 19th.
Thank you. I just, I, I think all of us were under the impression that it was March 18th that there was a deadline date. Councillor Chapman?
Yeah, I spoke to him afterwards, and that 18th, 19th is not a solid thing because I think by doing that, I'm speaking to the amendment, but by putting that date on there as opposed to saying by a date before the end of March, where they are available to come and their reports are done is much better, because if we do that and they're not ready by March 19th, it doesn't work.
March 30th, I don't care. Hit a data, I'm busy.
All right. End of month. He's fine, the second is fine with it? Don't worry, I'll come to you. Yeah, no, you, listen. I see the enthusiasm. Give me a chance.
I speak briefly to my amendment? Very briefly. I think it's, I think we need a council meeting, but I'm also concerned with, if part two passed and wasn't taken out, we're actually rendering a decision tonight, and I think that's the last thing we just want to do.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kerr, you wanted to speak to- Um, councillor Kerr, you wanted to speak to this?
Yes, I don't agree with taking out number two. And I'll tell you why. Because if we don't say that, that means that the federal government and the province could come and dictate to Oshawa that we're gonna have a CTS site.
I don't think it does. If you look at the documentation, there has to be local support, I believe, under the documentation, that's my understanding from the previous report-
Okay.
-of March of 2018, sir.
If that's your understanding, then I'll stand down, otherwise I think that should be in there, thank you.
Councillor Chapman?
Yeah, I can, I can support this, I would just hope that, without having to amend it, that the mayor would take into consideration, between the mayor and the clerk's office, to have a discussion with Mr. McGarry to see-
Oh, very much so.
When all their reports are done, and we've had some time to read it, and, and still make their deadline-
Yes.
-uh, which, uh, in my discussions with him on the side was, it's probably gonna be after March 18th-
Yes.
-a week or so, probably.
Yes, I'll, I'll make sure of that. Councillor McConkey?
Um, I'm not too sure if we can actually ignore what councillor Kerr said, uh, you know, there's a lot of things that we wanna read in a meeting, and, uh, I mean, I'm gonna mention the Durham Region Transit Agreement, that somebody missed something, but I don't see why you're taking out, um, that the federal government and province not, not approve a CTS site in Oshawa at this time, and then continue until, or be, until after a future meeting of council? Like, why are you taking that?
So, if I can, if I can make a suggestion, we're gonna deal with the amendment as it is, if you're not in support of it, vote it down, if you wanna bring another amendment back, um, then do so at that time, but I believe that, um, you vote this one either up or down.
A recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote. Mr. Clerk?
Councillor McConkey?
No.
Councillor Neil Zabson, councillor Nicholson?
Yes.
Councillor Chapman?
Yes.
Councillor Guyberson?
Yes.
Councillor Gray?
Yes.
Councillor Hurst?
Yes.
Councillor Kerr?
Yes.
Councillor Maren Petchy and councillor Absinthe, mayor Carter?
Yes. That's affirmative, and it passes. On the main motion as amended, all those in favor?
Um, just a second, I had another amendment.
If you have it in writing, and-
So, I'm sorry, we're voting on number two, this is complete?
No, no, we're, we've, that's, all this is done, you've got another amendment you'd like to bring forward, do you have it in writing?
I do, it's not on one, two, or three.
No, no, that's fine, and do you have it in writing?
I do.
And your second or is?
It's just a change of two words, and, uh, it's on the second last, whereas, you've got "whereas the city recognizes the healthcare crisis."
It's not, you can't, uh, that's not an option.
I'm sorry, it's very slanted, if someone's not in favor-
I'm just, I'm just telling you what the ruling is.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion as amended, all those in favor?
Recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote.
Councillor McConkey?
No.
Councillor Neil Zabson, councillor Nicholson?
Yes.
Councillor Chapman?
Yes.
Councillor Guyberson?
Yes.
Councillor Gray?
Yes.
Councillor Hurst?
Yes.
Councillor Kerr?
Yes.
Councillors Maren Petchy and councillor Absinthe, mayor Carter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good. Okay, that was main motion. Uh, before we go to the confirming bylaw, if you'll be patient with me just for a moment, please, I wanna inform council that at approximately 3:30 yesterday afternoon, I was informed that Minister of Transport for the federal government, Mr., uh, Minister Garnaut, uh, was going to try and have a telephone conference, or call with the mayor's office. At approximately, uh, 4 o'clock, we were informed at that particular time that the call would happen, uh, that he was in the House of Commons, and he would be calling from the airport in Ottawa en route to Washington. Um, at that particular time, I asked Mr. Ralph and Mr. Sharman to join me in the office. I wasn't really sure what the call was about, but I was informed, um, that it was probably in response to my letter of February the 14th, um, that we had sent, uh, to the Honorable Mark Garnaut, the Minister of Trans- Transportation, um, and that was really the concerns of council, um, that was there. I can say with confidence that the conversation was difficult at times because he was in an airport about to jump on a plane, uh, the noise from the surrounding area, I don't know if he heard it well, or, uh, I didn't hear him well. But one of the two things that we wanted, uh, to kind of rush in before he jumped on a plane, was would there be an opportunity to extend the consultation period, um, because 30 days doesn't seem to be realistic? And also, would he take, uh, the message about the stay in regards to the road itself? There was no answer either way, but that was what was conveyed to him. We're hoping that, uh, the working group will be able to have an opportunity to be able to have more of a fulsome discussion moving forward. I wanted council to know that that phone call did happen, I did take it, um, and that those parties were, uh, in audience at that particular time, and I wanted to make sure that all council members were aware of that. Councillor Chapman, do you have a confirming bylaw for this evening, sir?
I do, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Guyberson, that the confirming bylaw be passed.
Confirming bylaw has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Can I have a, a motion, motion to adjourn, moved by councillor Chapman, seconded by councillor Guyberson? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. For everyone in the audience, thank you very much for your attendance here this evening, and members of council, thank you for everything, staff, thank you, and please drive safely on your way home.